Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 2nd edition of the Lexington City Council. Thank you all for being here. And it feels like a beautiful fall evening. And too bad we can't all be outside playing. But call the meeting to order and ask that you all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all very much. You have the agenda before you? Are there any additions or corrections or observations from council or staff? Hearing none, we will adopt the agenda as presented and move right into consideration of minutes that were provided in your council packet. Any items there for discussion? Hearing none, we'll adopt those as presented as well or approve those as presented. Next, I would invite citizens who would like to speak to council to please come and let us hear from you. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council this evening? Hearing none, we will close the citizens' remarks and comments and move right into the consent agenda. Consideration of the fiscal year 21 audit report. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And roll call vote, please. Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And she's not here, but thank you to Emily Vires and certainly to staff for preparation. And it's always nice when your auditors say they enjoy working with our staff. So thank you all for a job well done. Unfinished business, consideration of the Holes Drive-In request. Again, that information was presented. And I'd ask the city manager if he wants to introduce that or make additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't want to re-cover all the ground we've been over. I think everyone's really clear what we're looking at here. I did want to note that council member Smith had made a comment at our last meeting indicating, or actually two meetings ago, indicating he'd like to look at or be informed of any possible criteria that could be utilized when evaluating requests for additional funding from discretionary agencies. I did provide a list for you that I have used, as I said, informally in the past when looking at such requests. And I'd be happy to discuss these with you. I don't know if you would like me to read through them in any fashion, but you do have them in front of you. My view is that when looking at criteria of this nature, there are some things that stand out. I would look at a one-time capital project so that we're not committing ourselves to an ongoing annual expense. I would say it would not be supported then, again, by the taxpayers on an annual basis. The operational expenses would not be supported. And it provides unique services used regularly extensively by many Lexington residents. There are some very specialized nonprofits or agencies out there that provide activities, services for our community, very small slices of the community. Important, but when we start talking about public dollars, I, in my mind, like to see those organizations that provide more extensive and broad support. If there's a consideration, those are the ones I would consider funding and recommending to you that we fund. I also would look at very carefully organizations that primarily raise their own funds. If they're looking at trying to fund everything they do from one level of government or another, I don't know that I readily accept that it's government's responsibility at any level to fund private organizations of any type. Now, that's not to say there aren't some that probably might stand out, but in general, if their community organization is based on serving a need in the community, then the community should fund those, provide the overwhelming amount of funding for those programs. And that also then, as we provide funding, should we provide funding for a specific purpose, it does not create the expectation that we will then fund year after year just because we made that gesture, provided that level of support for a unique project at a unique time, and that's the only purpose, the only reason we would participate. And so these are some of the things I would recommend to you that we use or you could use when making these decisions, as council member Smith requested. And I take any questions that council might have, but I do still firmly recommend that because Holes is so unique and we work with our regional partners, especially Rockbridge County in so many ways, it would be advantageous for us and for our community to put a small amount of money into this project at this time, and I'm recommending $5,000 for that purpose.
Thank you, Jim. Members of council, have any questions to the city manager?
Just a gesture of appreciation for putting this together. It's very helpful and it gives us some framework on how to move forward as we consider these requests. One thing that did, I guess, pop up to me as I'm looking at this is there's not a cap on the amount, but I guess that would be something we could debate either coming from the city manager's office as a recommendation or amongst ourselves as we consider the request. So that's just an observation, but not critical. Thank you.
Very good. If there are no additional questions for the city manager, I'd ask for council's consideration of this item.
So we postponed it at our last meeting. Do we need to remake a motion or we just go ahead and take a vote?
I would suggest, I'll look to my attorney.
I think just picking it up and making a motion will be fine.
Well, we had a motion and a second. I'm trying to remember. I think we had a motion and a second, and then we tabled it to continue on, partially to see what the county would, I don't think, to see what their response was.
Well, I couldn't remember if it was tabled or postponed at that point. Regardless, it's not going to hurt anything to have a vote to take it off the table and then vote on the motion again. Or I should say, vote on the motion for the first time.
That sounds good. I moved that we raised the issue again, and I moved to approve $5,000 to support the Holes capital campaign to purchase the property.
So I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Ms. Alexander.
Yeah, I just have comments to make. I really appreciate what you've done here, Jim, with clarifying the position you want to take on the contributions going forward. The thing that had bothered me initially really had to do with the agencies that we've been turning down in the budget. And I've been thinking, like, when going through this, in their own way, they, some of them contribute to the economic viability of this community. And without the success of some of them, we will certainly feel impact if they are not successful. We are not responsible for their success, but we certainly can play a role. And I think there've been, I've noticed some things over the last two years where you have been playing a role, whether it's monetary, whether it's in-kind contributions or otherwise. And that is very much appreciated. And moving forward, if we could just keep those kinds of gestures in mind, I think each of those agencies would be appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Anyone else? Hearing no further questions, I would ask for a roll call vote for a motion to approve $5,000 to contribution for Holes Drive-In. Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Ms. Strong.
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler.
Aye.
Mr. Alligood.
Aye.
Mr. Ayers.
Aye.
Ms. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. Next, reports in communications, Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
A quick update from landfill. The Cell 2 liner is now complete, sorry, with installation. Construction of Cell 2 should be finished by the end of the month. Earlier this, middle of November, DQ performed a construction inspection, found no issues. That about hits the highlights. Any questions?
It's always exciting talking trash. Thank you, Chuck. Main Street Lexington, is there anything going on?
It's a big weekend. Tomorrow is the parade. It starts at 6:00, and the weather should be perfect. And then the Jingle Bell Run is on Saturday. And all through the month until Christmas Eve is the Love Likes Lotto. So go downtown and shop at our local businesses and have a lot of fun this holiday season. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Leslie. Please pass along our appreciation to Rebecca and her merry elves at Main Street Lexington and all the things organizing. Do you know who is organizing the Christmas parade this year?
Eric and Chandra Mogensen.
Ah, okay. Excellent. And do you know who the grand marshals are?
It's Jenny Carter.
Jimmy Carter.
Jenny, from, from.
Oh, Jenny Carter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alvin Dennis.
Gotcha. Thought, wow, Jimmy Carter. Direct from Georgia.
Especially with a mask, it all blends together.
Or the Jimmy Carter from Buena Vista. I wasn't sure which one. Terrific. Thank you, Leslie. Planning Commission.
No report.
Fantastic. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers.
Regional Tourism won't meet again until Wednesday, December 8th, so a short report tonight, but did want to mention that Virginia Tourism's Traveling Love Works installation was in BV's Downtown Square from November 30th through today. And if you didn't have a chance to check it out there, Lexington's Hopkins Square will be hosting the installation this February over Valentine's Day. It's a good day to have a love sign, I think, and through President's Day weekend. This week, Regional Tourism Director Gene Clark and I met with Washington Lees Sasha Galaboff and Alessandra Dickovic to discuss the tourism partnering again this year with Washington Lees Community-Based Learning Program. Last year, they worked on an interactive map of historic black-owned businesses in downtown Lexington. And so we were sort of brainstorming what they would be working on this year. And it looks like it's going to be a series of audio podcasts with interviews with local residents who might be familiar or remember those particular businesses. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they put together. And we will be presenting them and hosting event at the Visitor Center probably in April for that. And also, I wanted to reiterate Leslie's plug for the Christmas parade tomorrow, which starts at 6:00 p.m. The theme is classic Christmas movies, and I'm excited to be a judge, along with Lexington Down Down Books owner Paige Williams and Brandy Flint from the Rockbridge Office of Community Development. And I hear the master of ceremonies will be Tom Lomax. And that's everything. No other questions.
Terrific. Thank you, Dennis. Any questions regarding that report? RARO, Mr. Ziegler.
The RARO Board of Directors met last night. And, you know, just kind of an update, we're back to playing basketball. And 39 teams have been organized amongst all of our levels. 39 teams. That's a ton of volunteer coaches, that's a ton of kids, it's over 370 kids making up those 39 teams. And on any given week, seven gymnasiums in Lexington and Rockbridge County are used to support all of those 39 teams practicing and playing games. And so it's a great testament to the gyms that Lexington and Rockbridge County help provide. You know, Buena Vista doesn't have the gym space, so we're not able to get into their gyms, but of course, you know that we use Laurel Park a lot for our outdoor sports, you know, softball and baseball. So, but our gyms, that's scheduled, thanks to the administrators at the, at the two school districts, allowing RARO to get in there and to schedule those facilities. And it's really, really important. 370 kids, 39 teams. Also, the budget season has started, as Jim knows, and RARO has a new executive director, so he's jumping right into it to understand where we've been, where we're going, what we need to be asking for. And the RARO Board of Directors is glad that we're being included in the salary study being done by the Berkeley Group. And lastly, but not least, we have advertised a program coordinator position. It's been advertised for about two weeks. It's on the city's website, it's going around, it's out there. This has been a position that's been, that we filled previously, it's just been, it has been vacant for a few months, you know, through the pandemic a little bit, but we kept it in the budget because we knew as we came out of the pandemic, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of kids would be playing sports again, and we would really need it. And so if folks are interested in that, it's online. That concludes my report.
39 coaches at least. Wow. Terrific. Who says there's nothing going on in Lexington? Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
No report.
Thank you, ma'am. Maury Service Authority, Mr. Alligood.
Actually, no report, but the.
However.
However. The Maury Service Authority typically meets once a month, and it did not meet this month of, this past month of November. And what its board decided to do was to have a meeting the second Tuesday of December. They'll be both, they'll do the November and December meetings together. And so our city council meeting will be a few days after that. So at that point, I should have something more substantive to say, but as of now, no report.
So you're saying you have no report? Got it.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you. For those of you who have been contacted about the farmer's market, Karen Roundy is not able to be with us this evening, but had put together a memo and asked for it to be read into the comments. Yeah. And so I'd like to offer that. I think all of you understand as far as council, but if you have questions, see me afterwards, but this is the content of her note. On November 18, 2021, someone called our office and requested a business license to sell baked goods at the Lexington Farmer's Market. My deputy filled out a zoning approval for the City of Lexington Business Licenses form and gave it to Arnie on November 19, 2021. I called the applicant and left a voice message, including a peddler's business license would be needed and the amount would be $500, which was only good for the calendar year. November 22, 2021, I discovered via the Lexington Farmer's Market Facebook page that unlicensed vendors who were not farmers were selling at the Lexington Farmer's Market. I called Mr. Wapner and advised the vendors who were not farmers could not sell at the Lexington Farmer's Market without a business license. I informed him a peddler's business license would be required by each vendor, which cost $500 per year. In the past, there have been only a few complaints that my office has received concerning the Lexington Farmer's Market. A couple of complaints were people trying to sell corn that they had previously purchased, they did not have a farm, but previously purchased from their vehicles on Jefferson Street instead of the Lexington Farmer's Market area in the McCrumbs parking lot. When I was there checking on the complaints, I discovered someone selling T-shirts. I advised the vendor and Mr. Wapner that only farm products could be sold at the Lexington Farmer's Market. Some people at that time had baked goods, which I indicated was fine for them to sell because they were also selling their farm products, i.e. zucchini, berries, et cetera, that were used in the baked goods. I have not received any complaints in the past several years concerning the Lexington Farmer's Market and therefore have not been there to discover the unlicensed vendors. And so an issue of folks that are not farmers and not selling farm products are considered peddlers and would need the necessary $500 peddler's license. Also, with my report, I wanted to give a shout out to the people of Diamond Hill who are suffering through a miserable construction project. It's going to, it's messy, I shouldn't say miserable, but it seems to be going reasonably well, delivering children to school in the morning, everything is organized and well-appointed. So I want to recognize Randy Hostetter and his team for the good work that they're doing to move this project forward in a timely manner. And very grateful, I passed a couple trying to navigate the street in piles of gravel. I know it's a huge inconvenience and very grateful for the citizens of Diamond Hill for their patience in this replacement because it's not fun. Having experienced it downtown when the water replacement ditch went in front of my office for a summer, it is certainly no fun, but thank you to all of Diamond Hill for their kindness. From time to time, you know, we get emails of people not really happy with the city. And on a rare occasion, we get one like this. This morning, we woke up to no water owing to a break here on Honeysuckle Hill, one of three last night, apparently, but I don't write to complain. These things happen. It does, however, serve to remind me once again how very grateful we should all be for the tireless work of our public work employees engaged in day to day, in day after day. Of course, showing up at 4:00 a.m. to fix a water main is admirable, but it is really the daily task that we take for granted that impressed me the most. The trash is always picked up on time, the waste baskets in the parks are emptied before overflowing, the flowers on Main Street are healthy all summer long, the snow is often plowed as it hits the ground, et cetera. And in my experience, when talking with these public servants, whether to ask what is going on or what they are doing, they are invariably polite, courteous, and willing to answer questions. I don't know what it is like in other communities, but I can only surmise that we are among the fortunate. Please pass along our gratitude to any and all of our unsung heroes. Best wishes, Lawrence and Elizabeth Betch. So warmed my soul and gave me great joy to pass along to the city manager and to Jeff Marton. Additionally, wanted to give a big thank you to Public Works as we embrace the holiday season, specific fire and rescue and police because of all these great events that we'll be experiencing as we've talked about in the past. And a special thank you to Skip Hess for the 26th year of the candlelight processional and tree lighting. As mayor, it's a treat and a lot of fun to be able to flip the switch and watch the children as they see Mr. and Mrs. Claus, who, after all these years, I didn't realize were such good friends with the Mormons, John and Mary Jo Mormon. So a great night last Friday night and grateful for Skip for making that happen each year. And that is the conclusion of my report, and I'll bounce pass it to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Taking this mask off helps me to breathe and speak better, I hope. A little update on some potential legislative action that I will be bringing to city council. Locally, Rockbridge, Allegheny, Bath Counties, along with Covington, Buena Vista, and Lexington, are working on a joint resolution to our delegates and senators, informing them about the significant financial burden placed on our local jails by the General Assembly. For years, the General Assembly has permitted state detention facilities to close and the number of state detention beds to decline. At the same time, the number of state responsible inmates in local jails has grown significantly. This crowds local jails and causes us to then lease beds at a premium in the few jails that have extra beds available. Aside from that, the rate that the state reimburses us for holding state responsible inmates is $12 a day. Our actual cost is over $52 per day, and this has occurred for years. Obviously, significant financial burden to every community that has a local jail in the Commonwealth. Already, the local, already the localities served by the regional jails in Winchester and Rockingham have passed a similar resolution, and Stanton, Waynesboro, and Augusta County are doing the same. With our combined efforts, we have to let our state elected officials know that this practice has cost and will continue to cost our localities hundreds of thousands of dollars annually. And I do plan to bring you a resolution at the next meeting, which will also be jointly brought to Rockbridge County, Buena Vista, Allegheny County, and Covington. So in our region, we've been working together jointly on this, and I do anticipate that other jails and localities across the state will be doing the same thing today and in the near future. I'd like to report a little bit on our juvenile center and what it's comprised of and how we use it. And we are a member of a localities that, seven localities that support the Shenandoah Valley Juvenile Center, and this includes Augusta, Rockbridge, and Rockingham Counties and the cities of Harrisonburg, Stanton, Waynesboro, aside from Lexington. And together with our partners, we are served by the facility, and we pay for the operations of the center based on our annual usage. Of course, Lexington's use of the facility is very low, as is our annual cost. And remarkably, since July 1st of this year, this current fiscal year, not one juvenile has been in the center from Lexington for one day. So that's a very positive thing, not only from a financial standpoint, but it also reflects on the great care our parents are taking to raise our young people, the community itself, and how we take care of our community and the young people, and also our schools who also provide guidance and assistance and support as young people mature and move through that process. So we're very fortunate that not only do we pay very little for that center that we need to provide, but also we have very, very low occupancy, luckily. The Miller's House Museum has been undertaking an annual fundraising event, and they've already in just a few days raised almost $1,000. And I'd just like to ask people who are listening to please consider making a donation today to the Miller's House Museum. And they can contact Dick Halseth at richardhalseth@gmail.com, or they could probably call me or get in touch with me, and I'd help get that money to those folks. As I mentioned earlier in our work session, I was notified by our contact at Department of General Services that we have agreed on a price for the VDOT property. The price was agreed on based on the formula approved by the General Assembly when they allowed us to consider the purchase of that property. VDOT has performed or had an appraisal performed. We have had one performed. The average of those two appraisals is then the purchase price. So that's what we will be doing. Our attorney is working with the Attorney General's Office of the state to put together deeds and the paperwork so that that can then be signed. He's also producing a resolution the city council will have to approve accepting that property. So that's the next step. I've heard from a contact at DGS that that could happen as early as January. Share that, that's what he said. I won't guarantee you that that's what's going to occur, but that's what I was told. So. Another issue in this area that has come up from time to time, I think we're all aware of, is short-term rentals. And there are some advantages to having short-term rentals, and there are some disadvantages. And one of those is we don't always see those rentals reported. And so they show up in places where we would prefer not them to be located. Neighbors are surprised that there's a short-term rental next door to them. We also, in some cases, don't see the revenues coming in that we would from other lodging sources. So working with, I should say, working with, but Rockbridge County and the City of Buena Vista, we're working with tourism, are bringing up a discussion of is there anything we can do regionally, or should we even consider doing something regionally, to track down, if you will, those unreported lodging places so that we can both license them properly, modify or inspect them if that's required in any of the neighborhoods they're in, and also then collect revenues, of course. So we'll be having a conversation of that nature just to see what resources are out there, the extent of the concern we might have. Up in Lexington Fire Department, they had one vacancy in the department. They hired a person last week, and so they are up to full staffing. The department also conducted their annual pressure testing of all the hoses. Believe it or not, we have almost 17,000 feet of hose the department uses to fight fires, and all of that has to annually be pressure tested to be sure it's ready to use when and if it is necessary. So they just conducted that operation. The department responded to two outdoor burns with our regional partners, one near the top of the mountain on West Middleton Trail, and a 15-acre fire in the old Bon Tex facility in Buena Vista. And as a note, I just saw today from the National Weather Service that we're in extreme drought conditions. They're asking people not to burn fires outdoors or to be very, very vigilant if you have to, because until we get rain, we're going to have some difficult conditions perhaps. In the police department, one of the conversations that's occurred around the communities, in some corners of the community is, should there be a reason for a mounted patrol here in Lexington? And I will say that 10 community members have come forward to discuss establishing 501(c)(3), Friends of the Mounted Unit, to support the formation and establishment of a vehicle for continuing operation of the mounted unit for the police department. I will also note that before something comes before city council, it'll have to come before me. I've talked with the chief of police, and unless this is something that can readily be afforded, it just won't be showing up in the budget or any other vehicle brought to city council. But it's being discussed. There are people who are willing to support it. I'm willing to look at what they may be able to offer. And that is my report. Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank you, Jim. Council members have any questions? Mr. Smith.
Can you share what the price on the VDOT property is?
Yes, yes, I can. The appraisal that we had done was $636,000. The appraisal of VDOT had done was $682,000. So then the price will be $659,000. And that's really, without putting, I don't have in front of me the numbers, but we, that we had appraised for in 2019, that's $20,000 more than in 2019. So it did not appreciate a great deal. I thought it might, frankly.
I just figured the public would like to know what that number is. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. City Attorney's Report. Jared?
Just a quick update on the Mayflower elder care facility. Steve Polk, the building inspector, was alerted to issues of concern at the facility back in the first part of November. He went out and did an inspection report, provided that to the owners and operators of the Mayflower. Their attorney has been in touch with me to sort of discuss resolving these issues going forward, the best way to make that happen as quickly as possible. Their position is they want to address these issues. They realize that there are concerns that need to be fixed and want to fix those. And it's just a matter of legally how they protect their rights under the building code and the appeal process and all that kind of stuff. Going down that track to, so they don't waive anything, but the practical track is to make a commitment that they are going to fix certainly the vast majority of the significant issues at the Mayflower. They've hired a structural engineer who was there, I believe, last Monday and are beginning to address some of the top issues that Steve highlighted in his report. So, as of now, that I think is going smoothly and hopefully will continue to do so. But shouldn't be, hopefully won't be a legal issue for anyone. And I get the sense that they genuinely are trying to do the right thing. So, hopefully that continues. Otherwise, I think Jim sort of hit all the topics that I've been working on mostly the past few weeks. So, otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jared. And I would piggyback on yours. I received a phone call today with a citizen who was concerned that the Mayflower had been given 24 hours to get things righted. And I assured them that that was inaccurate information. So, if I read a report or somewhere correctly, 60 days from the engineering report is the timeframe. Does that sound accurate?
Yes, sir. We give them 60 days to respond and indicate how they're going to deal with these issues that have been discovered.
Terrific. Thank you. Thank you, Jared. New business, consideration of request to participate in a regional housing study. City Manager?
Just lost my glasses taking off the mask, but now I'll put them back on. Hopefully, I can then see again. And most of us know that we have a challenge in our area today, which includes both Rockbridge and Buena Vista, as well as Lexington, with finding, individuals finding affordable housing in many cases. And this housing is sometimes typified as workforce housing, individuals who are trying to find a place to live and they can afford the cost, the market price of housing, whether that would be an apartment or a home. And also subsidized housing for individuals who may or may not be in the workforce, but nonetheless cannot afford housing for themselves and their family. And our regional partners, Buena Vista and Rockbridge, in looking at this issue, have already come to the conclusion that they believe a regional housing study would afford us some guidance and some opportunities to address this problem collectively. And asked us, could we participate? Their primary focus has been workforce housing for a number of reasons, looking at economic development. I think both Buena Vista and the county have more traditional economic development opportunities than we do, so that's been their emphasis. But they do recognize that subsidized housing is equally important and plays a part in what we need in our community. So, looking at a housing study, they're looking at an array of opportunities, evaluating the needs, and they've put together a grouping of deliverables that you, I hope, saw in this briefing and I will not read, frankly. But Marilyn Alexander and Leslie Strong from Planning Commission Threshold were also involved two weeks ago in a meeting by the Planning Commission jointly and the Threshold held with some experts in housing to discuss what we could do moving forward. One of those recommendations, several recommendations came from that. But one was, take a look at a study. Take a look at what you have here, what you are facing as challenges, and focus on maybe a narrow range of that because there are way too many subsidiary or component issues that you could address, perhaps need addressing, but it will be difficult to do that simultaneously. So, look at a study and try and narrow in on what you're trying to accomplish here. So, Rockbridge County, again, and Buena Vista have put aside $15,000 each. They've looked at other studies that have been done in similar communities that cost approximately $45,000. They've asked us for a $15,000 contribution to support this effort. Frankly, based on what I heard at that joint meeting of Threshold and the Planning Commission, I think that was good advice if we want to address this issue at all. I also believe that whether we see it the same way here in Lexington as folks in Rockbridge and Buena Vista does, we benefit as a region from trying to work together to resolve or to provide better housing opportunities across the board. So, we need that study to help us identify how we move forward, what steps we can take, what type of resources are out there, both financial and expertise in addressing different housing needs. And this study is being proposed to answer those questions and provide that guidance. So, I do believe $15,000 is something that we should look at carefully. I recommend to city council. I did take a look at our budget and I would not have recommended such if I did not feel the funding is available. We do have funding available, although this was not a scheduled item in our budget. So, I assure you that based on either one, revenues that are well ahead of their estimates, or as we spoke of earlier in the work session, you're well aware of, we had $241,000, I believe, that were set aside from last year fiscal year '21, brought forward that could be used for any purpose in our current fiscal year budget. So, this would be my recommendation to you. And later on, of course, you'll have to make that a budget appropriation when we do a budget amendment, but we do have the funding available.
Thank you, Jim. Creating more work for Jen, but that's okay. It's good work, perhaps. Counsel, you've heard the city manager's recommendation and welcome your consideration with discussion.
I move to approve $15,000 appropriated to do a joint housing study along with Rockbridge County and Buena Vista.
No second.
Have a motion and a second. Thank you, Mr. Alligood. Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
The recommendation asks for approval of no more than $15,000, so $15,000 number. So, I don't know if that's a priority or important or where that, where the recommendation comes from.
Well, I took the position in talking with my peers in Buena Vista and Rockbridge that if this is what you're saying is necessary, this is what I expect the city will contribute. And if you need more, you need to let me know that you need more. So, no more than $15,000 was my recommendation. Yes, sir.
And at this point, the request for proposals or contract, we don't know. It could come in at 30, in which it would be $10,000 each. Could come in at 50 and then you may be coming back to us.
That's correct. With some apologies to everyone involved, I would come back if I was, if I would believe that was necessary and we should do that.
So, is the motion for $15,000 or no more than $15,000? I guess that's the clarification I'm looking for.
The motion was for $15,000. And if you'd like to, I think a suggestion from the, no more than 15...
I wish to amend the motion to approve no more than $15,000 to participate.
Second amendment.
Mr. Alligood is okay with that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you for the clarification.
Ms. Strong?
I'll just comment. I think the list of deliverables looks good. I think it's important to set everyone's expectation because it was interesting talking in that, in that joint meeting that we had. When you start talking about a housing study, everybody has visions of what that is, but they are all different and people think it's going to answer every single question. But at least we can look at the deliverables and understand what specific information we'll get. And the other thing that I thought came out during that conversation was when we get further down the road looking for grant money for some of these projects, you also need to have a housing study in hand for that as well. So, I support this.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Anyone else? I'm grateful for the collaboration and working together as a region. I think it'll benefit all of us. Hearing no further questions, I'd ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Ziegler?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Mr. Alligood?
Aye.
Ms. Strong?
Aye.
Ms. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Thank you all very much. I'm not aware of closed session and, or any other business. Dennis?
Just briefly, at some point, I would like maybe for us to consider making a slight change to the peddler's license, not in the amount that we charge, but rather than it being the calendar year coverage, make it from one year from the date of issuance because I can see how somebody who may want to be a peddler does not want to spend $500 in November, knowing that's only going to get them two months. That does not seem fair. And it also seems like it might have a chilling effect on the peddlers because let's say they want to start in May, which is when the farmers might most want to do it. They've already lost five months. And so, I think the city would be best served, and I think the peddlers would be best served, if we could make that from one year from the date of issuance. And I think that would work a lot better for us. I don't know what all would be involved in making that change, but I would recommend that.
Thank you for raising that issue and I apologize. I didn't bring it up in my report. I thought the city manager might mention it, but in, as a follow-up to the, this issue, Jim and Mitch Wapner, who's representative and leader of the 501(c)(3) Farmers Market, have met once already to discuss the vision and the implementation of the Farmers Market and how it might include other vendors. But if we're going to have a bazaar as opposed to a Farmers Market, we may want to acknowledge that. And the idea, I think for, there may be structural issues for the Commissioner of Revenue or some restraints on year from date of issuance maybe make things very difficult for them. But I can say rest assured, in talking with the city manager, looking for ways to allow people to pedal at the Farmers Market. And perhaps because of the Farmers Market structure, they're seeking solutions to make it possible for folks. This is just unfortunate timing with discovering this in November and four Farmers Markets or three Farmers Market events left in the season, so. But rest assured, the city manager has been working closely. There's been some miscommunication that people were fined $500 and that's not accurate. There's a lot of emotion around it and a lot of misinformation. And the city manager's been working diligently to respond to folks just as he did to city council. Here's the situation. So, I feel confident there'll be a sound solution very soon.
That's good. Thank you.
Mr. Alligood?
Just a comment. I like the idea for the date of issuance as a way to mark the clock for vendors.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would like to see that.
Very good.
Another method of doing it would be to say that if you're, if you're going to apply in the first quarter of the year, it's $500. Second quarter, it's another smaller amount and do the fourth quarter.
I think the only problem with that would be that everyone would wait until May or, you know, they would skip the cold winter period.
They would be losing money out of their pocket if they do that.
Okay.
Well, as I say, there's, as a way of history, the reason it's set at $500 is the city about 20 to 25 years ago, on a consistent basis, kept having people drive into town with a large truck selling mattresses off the back without a business license and other people that would come. Because it's not limited just to people that are involved in the Farmers Market. There are lots of people. And so, in order to be consistent and reasonable for all businesses that qualify as peddlers, the ideas that you mentioned, I think are great. And certainly, Jim hears you and will work with Karen to see what modifications can be made. But the reality is, at the community festival every year, we waive the peddler's fee for people to come in for one day, that one event. The Farmers Market is unique and assuming that it doesn't grow to be 50 people or 50 entities, which three are farmers and the other 47 are T-shirt vendors, coffee baristas, et cetera. We want to make sure that we get the essence of the Farmers Market being the Farmers Market and opportunity for them to sell their goods and some potential additional artisans, like the folks who would be subject to a peddler's license because they're not bringing farm products to it, to be able to participate. It may be at a reduced or the Farmers Market may have a different license to obtain in that instance. So, as I said, sound suggestions and sound solutions will be forthcoming. Anything else? I guess you're all just trying to extend the meeting since it's 7:45 and close to a record short meeting. No other business to come before us? We will stand adjourned. Thank you all.